You are watching Access in LaPorte County, 1097. Coming up next is January 18th, 2024 meeting of the Michigan City Housing Authority Commission. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
Alright, it's after four o'clock, so let's go ahead and get the Michigan City Housing Authority Board Meeting. Let's move to the pledge of allegiance, please.
Mr. Harrow, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, could you call the roll, please?
Um, sure. Let me make sure I have.
Alright, Commissioner LaPorte.
Present.
Commissioner Benson.
Present.
Chairman Loon.
Present.
Vice Chair Ray.
Present.
Commissioner Bennet.
Present.
And we can note for the record that Commissioner Jacob Woodigan has resigned from the board.
Okay.
Alright, we got more.
Alright, so we can move right on to the next thing, approval of minutes. So in our packets, we should have the minutes for December 14th to January 11th. Uh, I'm not sure if you guys read through those earlier, they looked okay. Uh, are there any comments?
From that motion to approve.
Thank you.
Both December and January.
Yeah, December 14th and January 11th.
Yes.
Okay, well, at the same time?
You can do it either way.
Let's just do them both.
Both same time.
Yep.
Just for both minutes.
Um, do we call roll? Or just say aye?
Yeah, you can do actually a voice vote, um, if everyone is present. That actually would be even easier for purposes of today's meeting.
Okay.
So unless you have an eviction as chair and doing it that way, you don't have to do a roll, but vote for every person present.
Okay.
Okay, so all you have to do is say all those in favor.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. So that brings us to public comment. I see we have got a few members of public. Uh, we'd like you to come over to the podium, state your name and your address.
Billy.
Sorry.
We have the, uh...
Sign in sheet?
Yeah.
It's... I know they've signed in.
Yeah.
Sorry, forgot to grab that.
I thought that was coming up here, so...
Oh, nobody signed it. Okay. Alright, well, we got Brittany.
Yep.
Signed in, if you have something to say. Okay, come over to the podium, please, if you had to state your name and...
Hello, I'm Brittany Hood, I live at 3rd Block Superior Street, Michigan City, Indiana. And as a tenant that reported here from Indianapolis, Indiana, I have no clue of what's going on inside of this housing authority. I know my inspection was not done, or the day it was supposed to be done. I call, got messages. My landlord is also clueless on what's going on with this pool and things, so the same answers have been for the same year. We're working to fix this. This person got fired, this person left. So when do we get a straight answer, or am I waiting for a letter to come to my house saying that I have 30, 60, 90 days to find new housing that the housing authority is not going to pay for?
We all understand your frustration because we're working with similar issues with the board. Um, those are the best answers we have at the moment. We'll get it corrected as soon as we can.
So the same answer for a year?
Well, I can't vouch for everything that you've been told. All I can say is right now, we're doing our best to get things taken care of.
If I could add to that, Chairman?
Okay.
Um, just to kind of help move things forward, I'm not sure why you would have received those type of answers over the course of last year, as a bit much. Uh, I know there's been some transition in the last several months, and there's definitely, uh, delays as a result of that. But I can talk to you after the meeting if you say, find out who your landlord is and kind of communicate with them so that they hear directly from us as to where we are and when we think things might be resolved. If that helps you, I'd be more than happy to do it.
But what's the secret? I'm not the only person wondering the same thing. Everyone else, do you have too many people with the same answers? What's going on inside of here? Why are we still getting told we're working on it? We're working, you've been working on it since Kathy came when I got deported here.
Well, I guess if you, I'm not sure I understand then what your concern is. If your concern is generally what is going on in the housing authority, that's one thing. But if you're concerned about getting a letter and your housing being jeopardized...
So is the housing authority closing?
No.
No.
Is the housing authority looking to close?
No.
No.
Is the housing authority merging with another county?
No.
No.
So first off, there, because we've been told that you guys are merging with another county because there's no money here.
I'm not sure where you've heard that, that's not the case. Just, just so you know, that's, that's not happening, so, so now you know.
I'm asking the same questions that my peers and other people have asked.
Okay, Mr. Chair, so I think we've answered the questions as best we can. If you have concerns about the housing, I really want to make sure we talk about that because I don't want you to feel as though your housing's in jeopardy. I don't want your landlord to be confused, so I'm telling you, I'll talk to you about that. Any other questions you have about the housing authority, I'm more than happy to answer. But I think all the questions you asked regarding what's happening with the housing authority, that have been answered. If there's other questions...
So how do you work at the housing authority? Because there's also been said that there's not enough people here working, that they need help. I know plenty of people that are qualified, looking for a job.
There is a hiring process.
There's no, no one can give us a link, an email, or application to apply.
I'll make sure that you have that too before you leave today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alicia?
Oh, hi.
Yes, please.
Hello, I'm Lucy Anderson, I'm standing 518, present. Um, I've been with the housing authority for almost 11 plus years. Um, I know the previous people that have been fired, I know the new people that are here that's trying to keep everything together. They're doing an awesome job, but it's a lot of like low-key funny things going on and ain't nothing getting, getting done or anything. Like I'm irritated about it. Other than that, I ain't got no questions for y'all, I just hope y'all get it together and I hope don't anybody get fired or anything like that, y'all just get it together.
We understand your irritation. Monica?
Oh, I don't have any questions.
Okay. And then Adriana?
Hello, my name is Adriana, I do not have an address yet. I've been on the waiting list since I was 18. I got kicked, burned down all of my documents, I took photos and everything when I was here. And then I received a letter and said I was kicked off of the waiting list. And then I called and Kathy was in at the time and she said that I didn't, um, turn in my identification with everything, my kids' birth certificate, my social.
Right.
Which I did. And then she stopped emailing me back because of COVID, so I have, I replied again. And I got accepted for Lakeland Estates, but I'm still waiting, it's just like a waiting game.
There's a backlog on all of our properties right now, and we're working on renovating stuff. And I've been here for a year, and our whole mission has been to get people into houses. Uh, I can't speak to your particular case because we can't talk about things like that, but as, as general rule, whereas as our, our guidance, we are trying to get everything done we can to get people into houses. I'm sorry you've gone through this, but right now it is, if you're still in the system, if you need to talk with somebody, we've got hours from eight to four, and their job is to take care of things, so...
Yes, I'm steady calling and...
Okay, I understand, but at some point, you know, you can keep calling and the answer isn't going to change until we actually get things moving forward, and that's what we're working on.
Okay, and how long would that take for you guys to keep moving forward?
Every day, we're doing something new. We're, we're trying to get it done. I was on the phone yesterday until my phone died, so...
Waiting for years and years and it's kind of...
And that's gotta be frustrating, and I understand that, so...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just want to make sure I have your first and last name.
Okay. And Linda?
Mm-hmm.
Mitchell.
Mitchell, I missed that, okay.
I have a question, I'm her mother. Um, there's two different, uh, spots on the application as far as where you're going because I helped her, I actually went to apply for her application and, um, make the copies and make, you know, bring, but as far as what I'm being told is, when I applied the first time, she was applied for Section 8, but the second time it was applied for housing, so I don't remember that there was two different...
Those, those are staff questions that we can help you out with. Again, we can't do it during the board meeting, but we, that's, that's why we're here, is to help you with that, so...
There are two, the two different waiting lists.
Yeah.
Section 8 and housing.
So how do we get back on the, uh, Section 8 list? Because basically she was jumped over because of her not having her ID, in which she did. They just lost it and didn't admit it.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that if she could stay until after the meeting, you can have the staff member talk to her just about her specific situation.
Okay, sounds like a good idea. Thank you. That's the end of the sign in list, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Could you come up the podium, please?
Hello, everybody. My name is Okef, I stay at 20521, I've been a Michigan City resident, born and raised here. I signed up, she was a baby. One, tell me I was worth 20. I got a paper from them guys, tell them I was 193 on the list. This was probably four years ago, I still have the paper. They told me I didn't update my file. I came in and talked to, like she reads, um, got treated bad. Got the police card on me when I left, I was billed everything. Told me she down for the VS, she beat my butt and all this.
Please, just, we can't talk about personal staff. You have a problem, and I understand that, but we have to be sure of what we can and can't.
I signed up back in 1998, somewhere around here, and they keep telling me, you on the list? Then I came, I said, okay, when number I'm on the list? Oh, you was removed from the Section 8 list, you was put on a lottery list? I'm put on a list, I don't know anything about it.
Okay.
I'm still fighting this, I've been fighting, all I wanted was a place to stay. I've been homeless, they told me to go to a shelter, I've been to the homeless shelter, reunionist.
She's on the email earlier today.
Nothing been done in my situation, so, and then she told me, I said, y'all been updating my files. I got my paper when Curtis Lee was in office, told me to try it in.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
On the water, we've already received caution from HUD. Uh, we talking about personnel, talking about, yeah, we, we, first we need to have permission to even discuss this, but I think that all of these complaints need to be sent over to our attorney to, uh, to talk to afterwards because we do have to have the authority to discuss this.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, and I can't say, Ms. Crawford, I'm familiar with your situation. I, I received a via email today, so it is something that I'm looking into now, and I'll report back to the boards so that they're familiar as well, and then we'll get back to you.
Okay, because this has really been going on a long time.
We understand those problems, and we have been, again, working every day to correct them. And I can't.
Do like everybody else, fish it off, tell him, do it, wait, give him time.
That is not what I'm doing right now.
When I come back to the office to find out, nobody knows, like whoever I talk to last is either fired or not here.
I understand.
That won't happen to you this time, I'll be your offensive contact, and I'll make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright.
So are the apartments or houses, are they going to people that works here? Family members, or, so where are all the housing going to?
That's, that's not a question we can talk about during the, it's just not. Um, the housing authority makes its decisions, and we look forward.
Put their family or...
The housing authority makes its decisions.
Because for her to be sitting on there for 1990, that's absurd.
Yeah, I understand that, but again, the, we, we have to follow whatever rules and procedures we have in place, and we will continue to improve those to do the best we can. It, it's frustrating, I, I understand that it has not been perfect. It, it wasn't perfect when I got here, it wasn't perfect when any member of this board stepped on here, and we volunteered to try to get this done as quickly and as, we have to be within the rules and the guidelines. So as long as we can do that, we're, we're moving forward again every day. It's, it's just a process, and unfortunately, I, I don't have a better answer. I wish I did, but we don't have that.
I understand you guys are bored, I, I understand, I get it, but it's just, you gotta understand what everybody else is...
Yep, and I appreciate everybody coming out here today to let you know, I mean, it's a, it's not a great weather day, and yet you're here because you've got problems, and we, we understand that, we feel that, we need to work towards resolving it, and we will. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Alright, uh, next is communication, do we have any? I'm sorry.
Staff reports?
Communications, where we're at right now.
Okay.
Was, was there any other communication, did you receive anything?
I haven't sent anything.
Okay. Alright, then we're on to reports from the staff. Who do we?
Lucy, I hear.
Okay. Could you, sorry, could you come over here, just to make things easier so everybody can hear you?
Um, I'm replying to my house, Section 8. I'm a tenant reporting in, I think we had two portants and two portouts. And this month we spent, um, 160,000, 164, 60,000 pound landowners. We got 65 landlords still participating, but we have 138 tenants still searching for housing. We did get the, um, five mile radius approved, then go five miles outside of Michigan City.
Okay.
For the house.
Good.
Um, we do have briefers every Wednesday for my program, and it's usually 10 and 20 people.
Okay.
And Lucy is the one that's working on the waiting list, but we go off on what they had in the system when we got here. And I've been here a year, and she's been here several months.
Right.
But they can always email in and ask questions.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, have a question.
Okay. Uh, Angela, sorry, one of the commissioners has a question.
Ms. Cooper, can you, can you please explain to everyone, um, business activity? Where, that program, where's the, how would people apply for that program?
Business activity is not my entity, it's a part of, um, the public housing. They can use their vouchers to live in those properties, but I don't, and I pay the, pay their part if they qualify, but as far as we just know, like, the whole thing about the business activity, I don't.
So there, so we don't know if there's a, if the program exists, or is there application process for business activity?
No, there's not application process, it's just like, if you get a Section 8 voucher, and you find a business activity property, and I guess you can want to move in it, and they accept the, um, voucher just like they do with their regular houses, then we'll see if they qualify for that house, as a regular reason.
So you don't, sorry, but you don't know if we have like a set application for...
No, we don't.
Like, a lot of landlords, they have, you know, a real application, they do the background check, those things before we, before they move people into their properties, this is kind of along those lines?
Exactly. The background checks pretty much, if they're going to do a Section 8 program, leaving that property.
Okay.
Our public housing, doesn't matter, I'm still going to run that.
Okay.
So public housing, and so, so you're saying business activity is public housing?
I'm not, but that's not what I'm saying.
No.
I'm asking a question. Now, I'm just wondering, um, do you know what board controls business activity? Is this board or is it HDI?
I'm not sure, but it's going to control business activity.
Okay, and then can you tell me, if you can, how precise scatter housing? Is there an application process for that?
Scatter housing is still not in, I mean, we do, some people live in scattered houses in Section 8, but it's not a, uh, application, it's a, you know, application for those habits. Okay, you're not for application, but for scattered houses, it's not just that application. Like when Section 8 opens up and they apply, if they go to the scatter housing, then they find a, um, house, I guess, and it's approved, and the, um, HQC passes, that's when we start to work with them on that part.
Do you know what board controls, uh, hard side scatter housing?
No.
Do you know if scatter housing is public housing?
I don't too.
Do you know if any of the scatter housing and/or any of the business activity properties have a declaration of trust to any of them?
Not that, that part I don't know.
Thank you.
I have one question. Is hard side homes the same as scattered, scattered sites?
I'm not sure, I just, scattered sites and, um, business activity is totally something that public housing does. I don't, I only get it if they have a voucher and they move in there. And then I make a contract with public housing, they're going there. Other than that, that entity, I don't do it.
So individuals with a voucher can go into business activity and/or scattered homes and/or hard side homes?
I know, um, business activity can't. And so only business activities are homeowners, but, I mean, is it Lucy, the business activity homeowners?
No, business activity is not.
Which one is the homeowners? HMSC? We found one to that. I is PhD, it's a homeowner, but we didn't know it could be done like that, but that's how it's been done. So we're researching it now to find out why it would benefit.
But to your understanding, Section 8, uh, voucher participants can go into, uh, business activity first?
I think so, I'm not sure, but I think so.
And I have one last question, since you brought up the, uh, homeowner program. Um, Ms. Hudson was last here, she made it clear that we, uh, we tried to apply for the grant to restart that program and was denied. Did we, we apply, did something change that the board is not aware of?
I don't think that was a program issue. I don't know if she applied to that, we applied to the FSS program, and she was, we didn't, we didn't get it. But the homeowners?
I think Bob might have mentioned the homeowners. She did, okay.
We got like four, um, homeowners on the property, and that's who we're working with now because I don't understand how their rent shouldn't go up, or how it should go up. And I have one tenant now that I'm working with, because her rent went up, but her income went up. But she's telling me it's supposed to totally stay the same, and I don't understand. It was the same, but two incomes had, were raised, and I have a good calculation, it has to go up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Are there staff reports?
I don't have any.
Let me see.
Ms. Garmin wanted me to inform everyone that her information is inside of you guys' packets, and if y'all have any questions pertaining to public housing, that you guys can shoot her an email. She's not here today.
Right. Nothing proven?
No.
Okay. Attorney's report?
Uh, certainly have a report, but obviously, as we heard during public comment, there are several concerns. And I just want to report to the board that I'll work with the staff to get answers to some of these questions and come up with a, a plan on how to best address some of those concerns so that we can stay on top of them as much as we possibly can. If there's weightless issues, and they are what they are, the best we can do is communicate what they are, but...
Right.
If there's a lack of communication, we need to...
That seems to be a big problem.
Yeah, right, that's something I think we can fix, so I'll report on a regular basis to the board as those type of concerns, uh, are expressed or brought for the board, I'll address them, or investigate them, look into it, report back to the board, and respond accordingly.
Did we have any, uh, evictions or removals or anything during the last month?
Not during the last month.
Okay. We haven't talked about them.
I have a question for Mr. Harris, Mr. Chair. Can we please, um, have a copy of all the properties of Michigan City Housing Authority that has a declaration of trust? This is a question that's been asked, um, I believe it was like three months ago, four months ago, we asked the same question, or I asked the same question. I would like to see the declaration of trust for all of our properties. So we can determine what's public housing and what needs to go HDI.
So there's, there's one of two ways to get that information. Either you get it from HUD, or it should, the declaration of trust should be recorded on each property owned by the housing authority. And I think as we all know, there are some questions as to which properties are owned by a not-for-profit and which are owned by, uh, public housing, so it's a bit of a research project as opposed to just, hey, here's the documents that you asked for. So, um, I know that Attorney Rags told me that that's something that came up at a meeting that I didn't attend, but he did, and it's something that he's in the process of gathering, but just so you all know that is a little bit more mature than you might think, because it's not just in a file somewhere. Granted, it could be, but that's not, that's not just the case, as, as things stand right now.
I truly understand that situation, Mr. Rags, explain that to me. I would like for you, if we need to take a vote, I would move that we ask Mr. Harris to send out a letter to HUD because all declaration of trust must go to HUD. If public funds was used, then if that declaration of trust must be, has to be submitted to HUD. I would like Mr. Harris' law firm to try to get that, send a letter to HUD requesting that information. This is a, this is vital, because I think that our agency, where we are at now, we need to move, we need to concentrate on Section 8 and public housing.
Right.
All the non-for-profit properties need to be dealt with through HDI, and we're getting too much nonsense going on and co-mingling of stuff. And, and we just need to move forward, and we need to get all these properties that do have that bridge of trust and the right, and the right board hands, so they can be dealt with appropriately. So I would move that we ask Mr. Harris to, to, um, send a letter asking HUD to provide us with that information.
Do we need to do that as a motion?
You can, and I agree, that's an action that needs to be taken. Um, we should have those in-house, we should know which properties have DOTs and which don't. Now, what you do as a result of that is kind of the next step that I think we should talk about again, because some, depending upon what funds were used to obtain them.
Right.
They need to have a DOT, uh, recorded on them, as opposed to whether we transfer them or not, so I don't want to go to the step two quite yet, but I totally agree, we should know whether or not DOTs were recorded on, uh, agency-owned properties, so...
And we're not going to get nothing from here, because in our other meetings, uh, as three of us know that, uh, it's a mess back there in that back office, and he, Mr. Rags tried everything for over a week to try to get something, he couldn't get nowhere, so HUD has the information, they should provide us with it. So my motion's on the table.
How's that coming?
I have a question on the motion before we vote.
Okay.
What's different about this motion than Mr. Rags already has the process started?
So it's, I think the difference is, he was trying to figure out the issue of whether or not they were recorded, go to the recorder's office in order to pull them. I think what's happening now is you're, you want an official request to go to HUD saying that the board at its January 18th meeting, uh, took a vote requesting, uh, official copies of all of the DOTs of record for MCHA programs. So I think it's more formal versus kind of a research project that Attorney Rags is doing right now. That's the difference.
With your experience with HUD, what kind of timeline are you looking?
Yeah, that's a great question. I wish I could tell you what it would be, um, I don't, they typically don't take forever on requests like this for documents. Um, I can't tell you that, the only thing I can tell you is that I would hope that by the time our next regular meeting comes, that I should have them in hand. I would expect that.
And that's being physically responsible too, because now we don't have the attorney going all over the place, hour after hour, billable access, yes, billable access.
I agree. I agree.
So I second this.
Can we just do a, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's write that letter.
Will you?
Alright, so we're up to new business, and I want to bring the board's attention to a letter that I included in your packets. Last week, we had a moment of silence for, uh, Bob Lane, and that was great. I just feel that, given the, the fact that he just recently passed, we should go a little bit further. It should have been right here on the top. So I went ahead and I wrote up a letter, I've got, uh, the staff signatures, the board will sign it if that's what they'd like to do, but I'm going to go ahead and read the letter, and then we will, uh, continue from there. "Michigan City Housing Authority and its Board of Commissioners extend our heartfelt sympathies and condolences to the family of our previous executive director, Bob Lane Jr. We were saddened and surprised to learn of his passing on January 5th of this year, as this was just three weeks after his departure from our agency. It seems clear to us how much he cared about our mission to provide housing for those in need. We recognize and appreciate the obvious personal sacrifices he made to help our agency and the people of Michigan City. Although we were unable to have him with us longer, he has made a lasting impression with our staff and board. We only hope that we can continue the work he was so proud to be a part of. Thank you, Bob. Most sincerely, Michigan City Housing Authority." I would like to entertain a motion to mail this and as well as a condolence gift, whether it's flowers or something. For a second?
Second.
Get that last part out, the condolence portion, I think you got the last portion out about the gift. Were you, were you...
That was what I was just saying, yeah.
I know, I just thought the motion was made before you finished.
Oh, okay, I get what you're referring to. I get what you were saying. Uh, yeah, I, I'd like to have a, a gift, not to exceed a hundred dollars.
So move.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, next on the agenda is social media behavior. And I put this on here because I've noticed there's an awful lot of Facebook communication and other social media, Twitter, X, uh, whatever. And I don't know if we have a, a specific personnel policy, or if we need to add this to a personnel policy or to our board bylaws. I just want to discuss this and see what the board's thoughts were on social media behavior and how we can make sure, whether we're doing it or not, I don't want us to do it in the future. It looks bad for us, it's not the right way to handle our problems. We've got people that answer phones, we've got staff here every day. We can get things fixed without the things that are going on on social media. Obviously, tenants are going to communicate with us as much as they can. If they contact the staff, I would like to see the staff say, this is the process to go to and not continue to engage online. Notice back and forth, name-calling, any of the nonsense that I've seen screenshots and, and shared with me that I would, it's, it's not how you act. It's not how this board should act, it's not how the agency should act. And I'd like to see something done to make sure that it stops.
Mr. Chair, may I give this to you, tell me, please?
Depends on what it is.
We do have personnel, we do have a personnel policy.
Okay.
Already in place.
So I saw, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So I, I'm aware of, obviously because this is on the agenda, uh, social media behavior, new business, and also the old business item or unfinished business item, which is a resolution regarding nondisclosure.
Correct.
I think both of those items are personnel policy issues. And I believe that what we should do is propose an amendment to the personnel policy to deal with both, to the extent it's necessary. I know Commissioner McCormick just handed me a portion of the personnel policy that may already deal with social media. There may be an opportunity to update that because social media, to some extent, is, it obviously changes all the time. So we can look at that to see if it's as current as it needs to be. With respect to board members as well, personnel policy obviously wouldn't apply. So there, we would be looking at the, the standard of conduct, the bylaws and the standard of conduct that you all adopted to see whether or not that needs to be amended in any way to address similar concerns. Because I think the concerns extend not only, it's not just staff, but it's also generally applicable.
It's, yeah, it's generally, if you're representing the, the agency in any way, if you're responding to complaints, people are coming to you. We need to have a, a uniform way of handling it so that it gets handled properly. Calling people names is definitely not the proper way to do it.
So what I would propose doing is draft, I can put together a draft of both, the proposed amendment to the personnel policy and a proposed amendment to the bylaws and in particular, the code of conduct that addresses both. Circulate it prior to the next meeting, you go off and make comments, ask questions, and then it'll come before the board at the next public meeting.
Well, I move that, um, when Mr. Harris, give me a resolution together to, uh, to amend the, the policy that we have conduct policy and to look into bylaws. But I will also say on the record that nobody from this board has been on Facebook or any social media outlets speaking bad about anyone. There's no place for that. It should never take place. But again, there needs to be swift consequences. Because what I seen too, those screenshots was, was conspicuous.
And, and just for the record, it doesn't only have to deal with negative comments.
Right.
Right. It'll, there is an appropriate way of communicating information regarding the housing authority to the public.
Correct.
So, right, I agree with you regarding negative comments, but just in general, so there's not miscommunication or misinformation. You want to make sure however you're communicating official business from the agency comes in an orderly manner, right? Whatever that is that you all decide you want, however you want to do it. But that's the way it needs to happen as opposed to, just because you know the answer doesn't mean you should put it out there on social media as quickly as you can, right?
Right.
So, I understand. You need a second. Give me a motion.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
I have a question on the motion.
Okay.
Is this resolution for board members or for employees?
We're looking at amending both. I'm not saying anybody is doing anything. I mean, I know stuff is happening. What, I just want to make sure that there are guidelines in place so that nothing continues to happen or, or begins to happen. I just, I, I want there to be rules and I want people to follow them. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Keep this, making this first.
Oh my goodness. Yeah, I have something else for you.
Okay.
I have a question for the attorney, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Our admin, is that what we have to amend to order? We, I don't understand what the, how the lottery works. Bob was very, Mr. Lane was very concerned about that as well. We had numerous meetings and he talked about this. We need to put more emphasis and give people points that lives here, people that's handicapped should get a point or so. The lottery system is suspect.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with what the lottery system is. I don't have any involvement with it, but I guess I'll report back, you know, to the board.
One of our, one of our staff members has some input. Lucy, please. Because this is good information to know. And it might be something we need to look at. We'll put that on the dinner for next meeting so that we can-
Same as you said.
Right.
The waitlist was done years ago.
Can you just say your name for the record?
I'm sorry, my name is Lucy. I am the HCB liaison here at the Michigan City Housing Authority. Sometimes I try to get to the waitlist as much as possible when I can, if I'm not doing other duties. But the way, the way the waitlist works, it was, they put out information for the waitlist being opening, opened many years ago. There is a number system. But when they put out the application process for it, they did not list preferences. They did get numbers, but they did not list preferences to say, hey, if you are handicapped, you get serviced first. If you're, you're no disabled, you get serviced next. They did not put any preferences in place. The only one that they did was if you were already a resident here in Michigan City and your number is pulled through the lottery, which PHA Web does that. We have no control of that. We have to contact PHA Web and they sent us a listing of names of people that were gonna, you know, try to service. If they respond to that, again, there's no preferences, but the only one is if you are a resident already at the time that you submitted your application, then when you receive a voucher, you can port out to a different jurisdiction. That's the only preference that's in there, that's in the system that I have seen. They don't have any other preferences at this time.
So is that something we can add in then if we-
No, not with that waitlist. Once the waitlist is open again-
Okay, so the current waitlist can't be modified? In the lottery system, it can be modified?
To my knowledge. Again, that's something that maybe you guys want to try to, you know, look into or something like that. But to my knowledge, not.
Hello, question, Chair.
Okay.
Ms. Manny. So for the waitlist. So for instance, we knew, know that at one time we had approximately 2,000 people on the waitlist. If a person's been on the waitlist for years and years and save their number 300. And then this lottery, I don't know how it operates, how it works either, but if this lottery processes someone and that person could have applied and been number- Yes. So, so you're saying there's no rhyme or reason with it? Somebody that's could have been waiting-
Yeah, we don't have-
May get surpassed by someone, okay.
And what happens from what I've seen in the system as well, the first wave of applications were paper. They did paper and I think that went back to like 2016, 17, something like that. That was paper. Then when they submitted the new waitlist opening, they transferred as many as they could, from what I've seen, from paper to the lottery. They just transferred it over to that. And then they still continued to take applications for the lottery that would be sufficient through the PHA.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I just wanted the, the chocolate to hear that, that if a person is number 500, somebody is number 10, could surpass for one of those.
It's not going anywhere before, it is not. And unfortunately, again, prior to me being here, whomever was here before, I don't know what their methods were, I don't know. But from what I came in to see, I'm like, oh, oh, okay. This is, this is what we're doing. And I'm sending out, I am, I am sending out letters like crazy. But the response is very low. So what I did ask for, Ms. Sharon, when she was here, and Mr. Lane, when he was here, I asked for an email that we can publicize so anyone who wants to update their information to send to that email so I can, you know, get to those individuals a lot faster. No one, a lot of the waitlist participants are out of state, out of town. So when, when I send something, it's either return mail or they like, I can't get there this day. I have to keep, you know, what we're trying to schedule and method.
What's the purpose of us purging the system and purging the list? And you go through the list, you send out a letter, you send out a letter to them, they don't respond, then we purge them off the list. But we have ACOP, we have admin plan. There's no, you can't tell me we cannot change our admin plan. That is not correct. We are the legislators. I'm going to just let Mr. Harris do his research on this and I'm reportedly asking him, he does his research on this. The lottery system is not working. It's not working. And I don't, I'm not going to go into details. It's just not working and it's not fair. And we have to change it. Thank you.
The lottery system is handled through HUD, correct? It's not-
No, the lottery system is handled through our software.
Oh, it's in our software, okay. So it's our lottery system, but we can't tweak it?
You can, again, that's something I'm not able to do.
Right.
But again, you can amend the admin plan, you can do that. That was something I suggested a long time ago when we were speaking about the jurisdiction. You know, like, hey, let's try to get partnered with some of the other housing authorities so we can have more units available, you know, more landlords to the programs and so forth. But yes, you can amend the admin plan and get in contact with PHA Web. Again, I don't know what exactly all that the past CD paid for with the software. This is all that I can see, but I'm assuming you can give them a call and say, hey, we want to purge, how does that work? And go from there.
Okay. Any other questions?
Question. Mrs. Bennie stated earlier, it was about 2,000 on the waitlist, does that still remember?
No, we are, yes and no. We're between 1,700, 1,800 right now. Because again, I'm sending out letters and then if they're not responding or if they do respond, they're responding a month or two after the deadline. But when they don't respond, I give, I do allow them time. And if they don't, I, you know, we'll, yeah.
But how much time are you allowing them?
A good 60 days.
Chief, direct your questions.
Because again, a lot of our participants that's on the waitlist is out of town. So if they do want to come, if they do get in contact with me to say, hey, Ms. Lucy, I can't make it January 5th. I won't be in town to-
So are you-
Hold on. You, you're not supposed to dialogue that way, direct your questions to us so we can handle it, please. That's just the decorum, not, nothing about you personally. Just make sure we do it the right way. What is your question, sorry?
So-
No, no, to me, not to her. Please.
So is the person out of town or are they living out of state or what? I mean-
These are questions that we're trying to answer. That's why she's contacting them. And, and when we have an answer, we, we move. That's what she's saying. If, if we can't get a hold of them, then they're going to get purged from the list.
But they, but they contacted her and they said, I can't make it there in town then. So why can't you make it in town then? That puts everybody else behind because you can't make it in because you're living out of state, basically.
And that doesn't seem fair. I agree.
We are legislators, we can change a lot of this. I, I move that Mr. Harris research it and we will follow his lead on what he brings back to us, what we can do legally and, and don't get ourselves in any trouble.
Sounds like a good idea. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of Mr. Harris looking into our, amending our, our lottery process so that we can make it a more fair and make sure people know what's going on, so there's communication and it's fair to the people involved?
Including the purge, how far we can go with purging the list? Like, how long do we have? I, I, I thought a certified letter just needed to go out and maybe it wasn't respond, maybe it be purged, but I don't know that. So I'm back.
Yeah, the policy needs to be written so we know exactly how many days someone has to respond. If they don't, they don't. And that's unfortunate because we don't want, we want to lose people. Again, there's, there's got to be rules, there's got to be people following the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just a little to expect on that directive. What I'm likely to do is give you a report on what the current lottery procedures are. And then I'll do just a brief analysis on what other agencies do so you can compare what you have versus what other people have. And then you can explore your options on how you want to amend it. It'll work, so I'll give you a couple of steps. But I do want you to know kind of what the landscape is, what you do, what everyone else does. Then you can come up with some ideas on how you want to change it.
Can you please start purging, how to purge?
Yeah, I will, and I imagine that you'll see that from the procedure, yeah, right. But I imagine you'll see that in the procedures of other agencies too. So we'll, we'll look at all that.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Alright, under unfinished business, we've got vendor pay. Again, I realize that checks have not gone out yet. There's been an issue and we are working, I am working right now to get that fixed day by day. I mean, I, I want it done yesterday. So as soon as we get cooperation and get things finalized on that, vendor pay will be taken care of. That's, that's at the top of my list if things get done. Executive Director search is second on my list. We are accepting applications and we are actively looking for the best candidates we can find. And as we get resumes in, reach out to them, talk with them. We have interviews scheduled and we are moving forward to try to have an executive director in place as soon as possible because right now we're running without one. And that's a problem with HUD, that's a problem with the board, it's a problem with the staff. It's a problem with people trying to find houses because they don't have somebody to ask, you know, who's ultimately accountable. So we're working to fix that. And if we have, when we have news on that, we will let you know. Does anybody have anything to add to either of those things?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to add that today I came down and signed a letter relinquishing, terminating my, my M number and making sure that you have, I've indicated to HUD that you are, you are the new chair and we have the new vice chair.
Right.
That letter was done and sent in. Ms. Blanch sent that letter in. Hopefully, it was done this afternoon.
Thank you.
So that part, that part is done.
And I've sent communication to them as well to try to make sure that they know I'm the one there.
And I just want to be on the record with this as well. When I met with HUD, I'm not going to disclose everything we spoke of, but there was a time where we came to a meeting and came, a session, meeting where I was basically told that if I stepped down as chair, the application will flow in left and right. They have people wind up. As of today's day, we still haven't got any applications yet. I wish that we, that would take place because we need leadership here badly and we all want it, I know that. So I just want the record to reflect that. Thank you.
Alright. Anybody else? Next, we've got employee insurance. This is still on here because it kind of goes along with vendor pay. It's something we know we're going to have to be able to pay every month. So until it gets resolved so that that's not an issue, it's probably going to stay on the agenda just because it needs to get paid. The resolution on nondisclosure, we kind of discussed that already. Do, does anyone have anything to add as far as for what we need?
I think that goes along with the social media issues. Both of those you'll see reflected in what we draft for the board's consideration.
Before we adjourn, I'm not sure if this, how this needs to take place. When we met last week, we had adjusted our schedule to a four o'clock start essentially to make it so that a member of the board could meet with us. And now he's no longer a member of the board. So it's easier for the, it's better for the staff because their office hours are from eight to four. If we don't have it at four, because they've got other things that you do just like everybody else, if we move it back to three o'clock with everybody's approval, three or earlier. Does anybody have a better time than three? Like I said, I want to have it during the day and make sure that we're not holding the staff over from their things and we've all got stuff to do as well.
Whatever our attorney laws are, attorney can be here at every meeting. I know they work for us, but if we can accommodate this, it'll make it work for all of us. work for us, but if we can accommodate this, we'll make it work for all of us.
Yeah, if you revert back to your regular schedule, it's just fine.
We're still going to continue with the third Thursday, but at three o'clock.
Motion to move our meetings, our regular meetings to three o'clock, 3:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, any conversation? Okay. All opposed? Three o'clock.
One last housekeeping issue, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
You don't mind? We forgot to put on the agenda, the key. When I was here at our last special meeting, I noticed something that was disturbing to me and also goes to employee safety and Mr. Wagner.
Again, we can't talk about specific names.
Well, he's not personally that.
One of the vendors.
Well, we can say one of the vendors, Danny. Had a key to get into the, get into the main building, had a main, had a master key to get in any building, any office, anything. I think that's totally unacceptable. I also believe that everyone that's worked here should not have a master key.
Right.
I think we should be the ones to say, thank, or take the recommendation from the office manager on the person, she will be the one that needs a master key. Everybody having keys to get into whatever office is inappropriate. As we walked into the office, we noticed several items was missing. I'm so leaving it at that. So the key is a serious situation right now. Thank you.
I asked about the keys earlier, there's supposed to be a key log, I will look into that and we're going to inventory the keys and see who has them and who's, if, if people are in possession of them and they're not on the log, they're not signed out, then they have to be relinquished immediately. People that aren't on staff definitely should not have keys to our property.
I just think, I just think everybody that works here should not have a master key.
No, it's, it's only.
Yes.
If they need it, not because they happen to be able to come in the door.
Yes.
But that will hopefully be handled very soon. Anything else?
Keys. How did they get the keys? Because didn't one of the vendors have all the keys at one point?
At this point, no, because apparently we didn't know how many keys were out, so.
No, that's not true. We did, I did.
Well, then how?
The keys was turned over.
Mr. Wagner, I'm sorry, a vendor had a key long before.
Oh yeah, well, he had a key.
And we didn't know about, exactly. So, so we are, we are researching where the keys are and who has them, they are all going to be turned back in, otherwise we're going to have to rekey everything and that's going to be expensive and time-consuming and we don't have the time or the money to deal with that problem. We got enough.
But the answer is authorized to have keys.
And we have to look at the key law.
Commissioners?
No.
Why does, why did the commissioner have all the keys at one point?
Just to answer his question, when I was the chair, I was instructed to make sure that we didn't drop the ball like we did last time, confiscated all the keys. When the person that was going to work here, he wanted all the keys confiscated, Ms. Blanch and Ms. Bennie picked up the keys, put them in an envelope and the keys was put into a box, left in the executive office.